Who's out there trying to get a squirrel drunk?
Uh huh.
I don't know anybody that's been trying to get a squirrel drunk.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And I'm sure I've climbed a tree.
Yeah. There you go. Illegal.
Yeah, gotta watch out.
Yeah, watch out.
Take it in there. I volunteered. I volunteer at the Salvation Army. I volunteer at the Pregnancy Crisis Center. I volunteer throughout the Magic Valley. I teach here, you know, it affects me, it concerns me. And I just want to make sure that I am able to pass on that legacy and, you know, have
Seem like a very nice person, like the, like Mother Teresa here or something.
I don't know about that, but it's the idea.
I'm helping the poor and needy.
I, you know.
Here's me watching Netflix, you know, and I'm hiking. And then your mic is like right there.
Okay.
So this is how it feels like to be on a podcast.
Okay. Am I breathing too hard or anything like that?
Um, no, I don't think so.
I just, I heard a candidate and they were on the radio and I'm like, man, they're breathing hard.
They're breathing hard, guys.
That's why.
These mics do pick up like any micro, uh, like, uh, everything pretty much. And you can also move it around.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, you don't have to be kind of like, uh, you know, get it into a position where it kind of works for you.
Okay.
Basically. And then the main thing is like, uh, you just want to kind of hear yourself essentially.
Is it okay like this or should I?
I would definitely put it all across your other ears so that way you can kind of, uh, it looks a little bit weird with one in and so forth. Okay, uh, let me close some of these tabs. These are like things that I want to buy. Uh, let's close that out. Um, all right. And then I'll open up my notes. Okay. All right. And doop. Doop. And close this. Yeah, you can literally hear everything here. Let me just close one other door to see if this helps. There's like a humming I can kind of hear. I think it might be coming from there. Better. All right. Now we are ready.
Okay, awesome.
All right.
Oh, where should I be looking at? Sorry.
Just me.
Just, okay. Okay. There's a few cameras, that's why.
Yeah, just, uh, just be looking at me like we're talking normal. Um, these camera, one camera's pointing at me and one camera's pointing at you. And then, uh, we'll just kind of cut back and forth. Let me just, one, one other thing. I always keep forgetting if I changed my focus.
No, you're right. And Arnell is.
Arnell.
Arnell, okay. And Kamen was your last name?
Oh, it's Chulam.
Oh, okay.
You're like, I never even remember that.
Chulam.
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 It's Bosnian.
Okay.
But most people kind of say it in English, um, Kolam, you know, Arnell Kolam. Because in Bosnia, they have this letter. It's a C and it's got a V on top of it.
Mm hmm.
And, um, it's kind of like, uh, you can say C, but in Bosnian you can say tch, like a, with a little C and a little dash on top of it. And then it also has a tch, which is a C and a V on top of it. So when I came into like, uh, America here, they didn't have that.
Mm hmm.
So they're like, well, we're just going to make this a C, you know?
Yeah.
So, and then, well, I guess that's what we're gonna do is, uh, we're just, they, it, it's kind of like different languages have different, um, you know, like letters essentially.
Accent marks.
Yeah, accent marks and so forth. Yeah. It, it's, yeah, it's definitely interesting. But I, when somebody asks me, how do you say your last name? I just go like, whatever, you know, like, you can call me whatever you want, you know? I've even been called Ariel, like, you know, Ariel, like the Little Mermaid, you know? No, no, not Ariel. Okay. All right, let me do a clap here. Boom. Okay, so now everything should be synced. All right. Welcome to a new podcast. And we're still at it with talking to all of the candidates. I have Hannah here. I have no idea what your last name is.
That's all right. Hannah Cameron, seat five.
Hannah Cameron?
Mm hmm.
You have like two first names, basically.
I do, don't I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hannah Cameron. Uh, I was almost thinking like, oh, like, what I do is I try to associate people's names. And I was like, I will call her Hannah Montana.
Okay. That's so funny. Cause I do that with people and capitals.
And capitals?
Yeah. So I'm like, oh, like Helena.
Helena. What, what would you associate me? Arnell? There is no, there is no capital there.
I know, but certain names for me just kind of click, like Hannah Montana. I don't know. So I can kind of see.
Uh, I think the only way people remember my name is like, there's a cartoon show called Hey Arnold.
Hmm.
I don't know if you ever saw that show. It's like a football, uh, character itself. And, um, uh, sometimes people remember me by that or something. I don't know.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Arnold, uh, no D, just Arnell.
Good to know.
So you are running for seat number five. Let's kind of recap people with, um, who's running, uh, on seat number five, because you're probably familiar with this. Basically, we've got Leah Babaya, Babayan, and Spencer.
Cutler.
Cutler. Yep. I'm like, I'm very, I only remember people's first names.
That's all right.
Um.
And then Mike Allred.
Mike Allred.
Mm hmm.
And then you.
Yes, sir. Hannah Cameron.
Okay. Hannah. Remember that, people. Um, so, uh, I don't, I maybe this mic person, uh, might be coming up on Friday. I forgot who I was talking to. I'm so bad with names, to be honest with you. But, uh, this is a little bit alarming because it's like, I need people from the other seats.
Yeah. Seat one.
Seat one. Who's on seat one? Where are these people? I think one guy, uh, emailed me. I just forgot. I've been so busy with, um, other stuff that I've been doing. And I was like, oh, God, I gotta email this person. And he, I, I need to try to get as many done like before the election. Now, I know that you guys have like, um, something happening with CSI?
Yeah. So we do have open forums for the public to come in, uh, really see and hear us answer questions that are affiliated and affect the citizens of Twin Falls.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, when's that happening?
Um, we have one tonight. So, yeah, one tonight. And that one's actually at Eastside Baptist. So that's an open forum.
Oh.
And then we.
Do you know who's coming to those?
Yeah, seat five is going to be tonight. And then this Thursday, we have, um, another one at Eastside, and that is going to be seat one. And then, uh, the one at CSI is going to be.
Seat one and five?
Seat one and five. I'm just thinking the dates. The dates are going to be.
I've got it here somewhere.
This week, we have, uh, seat one will be at CSI at six o'clock Thursday. And the next Thursday, it will be seat five.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe what I'll end up doing is I might show up with one of my cameras, put it there and hit record and just kind of watch what happens and upload that as well too. By the way, I kind of want to be the dun 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 news source, you know?
Right.
Well, you know, it's really crazy that I've taken this much initiative to go ahead and try to get to know everybody and figure out who they are. Because it's like, what I don't like is when, uh, you look at a piece of paper, like, you know, when somebody's electing, and then you're looking, I'm like, well, I don't know who these people are.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and it's like, and then it kind of becomes like an any mini money mo kind of, uh, deal who you're voting for. And I think that's a bad way of voting.
Yeah, I would agree. It's kind of unfortunate how little publicity that candidates get while they're running because, um.
It's like, I think Times News and KVT, well, they're, well, at least you have the, these open forums happening. So that's something, you know? But it's like, out of like, our population of like, I don't know, what is 53,000 or 54, whatever it is.
Right there.
It's like, how many are gonna, they're not gonna all attend, you know? So it's kind of like, where else are they gonna get this information about you and what you kind of like, uh, stand for and so forth, you know?
Yeah, I do have a Facebook page and it's Hannah Cameron for TF City Council. Uh, and that kind of tells just a little bit more about my values and who I am.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is hard because if voters aren't really intentional about going and looking, then they aren't necessarily going to make more or any informed votes.
Yeah. It's almost, uh, I had this theory. I was like, it almost feels like whoever has the most signs, you know, the biggest signs, you know?
Mm hmm.
I think you need to make giant signs, you know, uh, like, pick me, you know?
And there's some big signs.
There's some big signs. I was driving around and I saw Spencer's signs, huge, you know, huge signs. I was like, is he making these signs himself or something?
Yeah, they're pretty large.
Yeah, I was like, geez, uh, you definitely see his, uh, signs. Um, so they're, they're getting up there. Um, I guess, let's kind of like throw this back at you, maybe, uh, a little bit like, um, did you grow up here? Like, what's your story?
Okay. Yeah, I did grow up here. Uh, I wasn't born in Idaho, unfortunately, but I did spend majority of my life here. And I grew up here in Twin Falls. I, uh, I've gone to O'Leary and I've taught out of Leary. So that's kind of neat. I've graduated.
You taught?
Yeah, I'm a teacher.
Oh, you're a teacher?
Yes, sir. So I've taught at a Leary and I have, I've graduated from Twin Falls High School. I teach sixth grade geography.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sixth grade. Uh, I do enjoy it. I do love it. Um, I did go away for a little bit for college. I, um, I studied in Europe.
Oh, wow.
And in Missouri. Um, so I've just kind of been all over the place and I've got a scene a lot. I, uh, came back here to Idaho because I know how good we have it. And I just want to see, uh, what I can do to better the city.
That's awesome. Yeah. So you're really kind of like taking the initiative. And I was like, it's like, I want, you, you're, you're kind of like on this, uh, stance now where you're like, I guess, well, you know, like, I want to help make it, uh, Twin Falls better itself, right? How did you even get involved into politics?
Mm hmm. You know, it actually started, I have a love for politics and it started in my high school government class with Mr. Larson.
Mr. Larson. That sounds very familiar. I know that.
Yeah. Um, and it developed from there. Um, my, um, minor is in international relations and then I have an emphasis in global studies. My master's that I'm receiving is going to be in public administration. So I don't know, there's always just been a heart for it. And, and now I'm hoping to do something with it.
Gotcha, gotcha. Um, do you, do you ever attend these city, uh, city council meetings and like, you know, like watch? Cause like, the thing is like, people can go there. It happens every Monday.
Mm hmm.
And you can also.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Uh, and you can also watch these online, but you gotta go to like, you gotta go to the website and you're gonna request the video and then it basically pops up if it's available or so forth. Uh, one of the things I was kind of talking about is like, you know, how can we make these videos more accessible? Like, you think we can move them to like an easy platform where it's always on there? Like, people are like on YouTube and stuff like that. I was like, can we not just move these to YouTube? Versus having them there so that way people can, you know, review them. I like that idea for some reason.
Yeah. You know, I, I do think, um, convenience is important. Uh, to be honest, I, I go in person. So I'm not necessarily watching them online.
Yeah.
So that's not been something I've dealt with, but you know, that is a good suggestion.
Yeah. Um, like, but here's, let me ask you this question then, I guess. Um, what are you seeing when people like, like, do you see, cause like, you have to understand, there's a big population here. Do you see a lot of people attending these city council meetings?
Unfortunately, I don't. I don't see a lot of, um, people attending.
Why do you, why do you think this is the case? You know, I, I, I was, uh, I was, uh, I was doing like a deep dive in some lighting stuff. And, uh, this thought came up into my mind and, uh, and here we are talking about this. And this thought was, how can we get more people into city, uh, uh, city hall to attend these meetings? Cause like, in my opinion, I feel like if you had like, imagine you had like, it always packed. You know what I mean? Then you would have much more input and then, uh, citizens feedback and things like that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, uh, that's a good idea. I mean, I'm always for it. I think that people need to get involved. I think the reason why people might is everyone has busy schedules.
Jobs.
Yeah.
Like, I got a job and I'm resting. I'm not going to go city council five o'clock.
Yeah. And it takes intentionality for you to get up and go and be there. And sometimes they run long. Um, if you're going over.
How long do they run? Like, I thought they were like an hour long.
Yeah, but if you're going over like, uh, budget, that's going to be three hours. Like, it's a long time.
You know, it's funny, I have the budget right there. Maybe I was gonna, I was gonna pop it here and let's talk about the budget a little bit. See kind of what you, what you think about that.
Yeah. Um, so that can be longer. Um, and, um, you know, it's right after work. People are hungry.
Yeah, I gotta go home, make some food. I'm not gonna go to city council and listen to a three hour budget talk.
Yeah, so.
So you sometimes attend these, obviously, I don't think you attend all of them, but you attend, uh, and you do this for fun?
Uh, I do because I want to know what's going on in my community. Uh, I miss Twin Falls and I'm representing, um, my community.
Oh, you're Miss Twin Falls?
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome. I had no idea.
Yeah.
I didn't know we even had like a pageant. You're Miss Twin Falls, huh?
Yes. So I'm Miss Twin Falls and I think that, that's kind of what, um, pushed me to get involved. I was like, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be representing my city. I want to know more about it. And so it started from that. And then I'm like, gosh, I would love to represent him on a more legislative, uh, platform. Uh, and that's why.
Then you're like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill out this form. Maybe, you know, it's part of this other conversation is like, I wanted people to kind of even know a little bit, like, how does somebody even run for office? You obviously know, I, I've said on the other podcasts, I'm like, yeah, I know how to do this. You just, you gotta get this form, right? It's like, basically, the thing is like, anybody can run for city council essentially, right? It doesn't matter. The, there is no party association. It's bipartisan or something like that is what it's called. And, uh, you know, you fill out the form, you, you pay a fee or you can have people sign for you.
Yes.
And you're golden, right? And, uh, these seats get, uh, reelected every three or four years?
Uh, it's four years.
Four years. See, I'm getting educated here. This is good. I, I'm not an expert in politics.
No, you're perfectly fine.
Uh, I, I'm just, uh, you know, uh, I dabble in looking into stuff is basically, I'm a curious person and I, I want to know how stuff works, where, you know, money's going and so forth and if we're utilizing it.
Mm hmm.
I guess, um, do you, would you, what would you say like, you know, for people that are like, you know, like, you know, I understand you're Miss, or you're, you're still Miss Twin Falls.
Yeah, until the end of the year, so.
Oh, okay, sweet. Um, but like for people that are like, not going there so forth, like, what would you say to them? It's like, you know, would you say like, hey, you know, like, come down here, look at this stuff happening, like?
Yeah, I think that, um, it's easy for people to complain. Um,
Yeah, yeah, easy.
You know, it's easy for people.
On Facebook for sure.
Right.
They increased the bud, they increased, uh, salary on these people. This is nuts.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. It's so easy to just type that out.
Yeah. And then they would realize, well, um, recently that was part of the, uh, city council agenda.
Yeah.
A couple of months ago. And so they increased their, um, their budgets or their salary by a hundred dollars per month.
Yeah.
And it was, they have an increase in the last 20 years. So it's like, people will be like, oh my goodness. But then they'd hear the whole conversation and it'd be different.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, like, I was like, well, the sad part is this, okay? It's like, they got this little tiny increase, but they don't even know the whole entire budget, you know? And it's like, like, if, if you knew like the, you know, calm down, watch this three hour budget thing and then, and then be like, oh, well, this little tiny increase is not that big of a deal itself. It's like, let's look at the rest of the budget itself. When I was talking to Spencer, he, like I said, he's, he gave me the budget here. Let me grab it here, you know? I'm gonna grab it here. This is, this is interesting, huh?
Sure is. You got the colored copy too. He must like you.
Yeah, look at, yeah. He printed this out. What a crazy guy.
Yeah.
I mean, like, so you've dabbled in this?
Yeah, mine's in my car.
Holy shit, people here.
So, yes.
Uh, look at this. Okay. See, the thing is like, uh, people don't, uh, look at this, right? But, um, I think they need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, I'm surprised that you do this too, you know? Blows my mind. Anybody that looks at the budget blows my mind. You know what I mean? I think it's like, wow, that's cool. You're looking at the budget. But, um, I guess, is there anything that kind of stands out, uh, to you in the budget itself? Cause like, the thing is, like, this is what I saw, like, this budget summary, you know? I put a little, uh, thingy here and I was like, the budget summary, right? Cause the thing is, you know, um, you guys are not going to be affecting 2022.
Correct.
You guys will be working on the budget for 2023.
Yes, but there is, um, room in the budget. So there is still room where money hasn't been allocated. So it's not to say that we wouldn't have an input. This is going to be the main baseline. But we will be able to decide, uh, what projects get funded. Um, and so we'll go over that. Not to say that we're completely.
Fully budgeted out for 2020. It was kind of like, uh.
Like there's wiggle room is what I'm trying to say.
Room for 2020, uh, too. I mean, again, just the mere fact that for 2022, we are about to spend $77 million. I try to like, get a visual representation of $77 million. It's a lot of money, like even for our city itself. And, you know, the way I kind of feel about it is like, we, you know, as a city itself, it needs to be spent the best it can possibly be. Um, are you happy with, uh, this? Or would you be like, we need, we need to change this?
You know, as of now, I wouldn't see anything that has stuck out to me like, oh no, this is just a waste.
This is a waste. This is me. I was, uh, I look at this and I'm like, what? What? You know, but again, I, I don't really know the details of these budget breakdowns itself. Because what I feel like people need is a little bit more breakdown, uh, on here. And, and this kind of leads me to my next point here. It's like, how can we make it so that these numbers people can drill down into and be like, oh, well, that makes sense. Cause like, like, like this city council number right here, right? It's literally says here, 134,000. You take that, you divide it by, uh, like seven people and that's their salary, basically. And that's it.
Let me see this. Can I, can I get a, never, another look? Yeah. Are you talking, which line?
City Council. So that's divided by, you know, city council itself.
Mm hmm.
So basically, it's not, it's like, it's all of their, uh, it's not their individual. You're like, you.
Yeah.
You're not going to be getting 134,000 dollars being on city council. It's like everybody's, so it comes out to be like 20 something.
Not even that. So it's about 12,000 a year.
12,000 a year is how much?
1,200 per month.
Yeah, yeah. So that sounds about right or something like that. So.
I wonder if there's more, um, like further into the, uh, actually I've looked at it and I don't think there is. But yeah, no, I, I, I can see where you're coming from. Jason, you're making it a little more.
Well, I mean, obviously it's in here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Somewhere. Like, uh, you want me to like, uh, this is, like, this is insane. Uh, you know? I feel like we need to digitize this and make it like, uh, okay, well, if this is the budget, I click on this and I can see, uh, sub count to like, this is where that money is basically being allocated or so forth. Just trying to make it easier for people, uh, to see exactly where their money is basically spent ideally. I'm a, I'm a big, I guess, proponent for like, we need to spend the money wisely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Otherwise, we're just taking taxpayer money and burning it or who knows what.
Yeah. No, I would agree. Um, I would say that we have been doing fairly well with spending it wisely.
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't cut jobs during this pandemic. I think that, that says a lot because a lot of people did. And, um, we have budgeted so that there is a room, wiggle room, with the unpredictability of next year and the following years. And so that's something that, um, has been taken into account within that, that budget. So.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's cool. Um, yeah. So, I mean, again, I mean, like, my whole thing is like, ah, I really, cause like, I don't know, like, if this is, if, if these numbers make sense to a regular person itself. You know, you've got like, you know, each, these are essentially like departments that all get their funding for the year itself. It's like, here's a million here, a million there, 10 million here, you know? It's, it's like, what, what exactly that 10 million is going to, you know?
Yeah.
So, I don't know. That's, that's, and I don't think anybody wants to go through this like fully, fully. Like you start digging into this and it's like, what? What? What?
It is a little tricky.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, like, that's why I can see these city council meetings running for three, four hours to try to, uh, organize this and just go, okay.
And that's three or four hours over like a long period.
When they do that. So you were attending some of those?
Yes.
I know Spencer was saying, he's like, yeah, I was a part of those as well too. I was like, you guys are nuts. I'm not gonna spend, uh, three hours listening to that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I, I like looking at it after the fact.
Mm hmm.
And maybe this is my complaining for, like, it's like, it's like, it's so easy to just look at it afterwards and just be like, ah, 10 million in that, you know?
Yeah.
Part of the problem. I need to go over there and be like, this is an outrage. Uh, we need to spend eight million, not 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. But, uh, so, so again, um, what? You, 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 you basically started looking, going into these city council meetings and then that triggered you to go ahead and want to be on, uh, position number five. Um, I, I guess, what I want to know would be is, here's, here's the ultimate question. It's like, why should people vote for you?
Yeah. No, I think that's a good question to ask.
Like you, you've got all these other candidates. I only don't know one other one. It's like, what makes you stand out, uh, from, you know, Leah, Spencer? Uh, like, so basically I'm comparing you to those people itself.
Yeah, I would say that, uh, my history, uh, where I've been and what I've done. So I have previously worked in the state legislation. Uh, I am receiving my master's in public administration with an emphasis in government and policy. So what I'm doing, what I'm learning is applicable to the job of city council.
Okay.
And I am in the community, right? I'm not just showing up and, uh, putting my ticket in there. I, I volunteered. I volunteer at the Salvation Army. I volunteer at the Pregnancy Crisis Center. I volunteer, uh, throughout the Magic Valley. I teach here, you know, it, it affects me, it concerns me. And I just want to make sure that, uh, I am able to pass on that legacy and, you know, uh, have.
Seem like a very nice person, like the, like Mother Teresa here or something.
I don't know about that, but it's the idea.
I'm helping the poor and needy, you know?
I, you know.
Here's me watching Netflix, you know, and, uh, I'm hiking.
Yeah. And, uh, I just think that it's important that we do get good leadership. You know, my motto, my slogan for this election is, uh, rising tide lifts all boats.
Wait, 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 wait. Rising tides?
Lifts all boats.
Lifts all boats?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's the idea that good economic, economic policy brings opportunity for everyone.
Uh huh.
And as a city council member, that's what our job is ultimately, is to bring opportunity for the people here in Twin Falls.
Oh, okay.
And right now we have a labor shortage if you drive.
Yeah, yeah. Everywhere you go, we're hiring.
Yeah. Uh, so if you're driving down Blue Lakes, you can see that that's obvious. And I think another concern about Twin Falls and, uh, what we have to be planning for is the influx of, uh, people coming here.
Yeah.
There's a lot there, but they don't necessarily have to get jobs here because of COVID. It's a unique situation.
They can work remotely and they can be making California money in Twin Falls, Idaho.
Yes, and it's beneficial for them. However, it's not beneficial for the small businesses here.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's just something that I think we gotta consider as city council in helping, um, small businesses. I know that Southern Idaho Economic Development.
Yeah.
Is a, uh, agency here in Twin Falls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's main purpose is to revitalize small businesses. And that's money that we don't have to spend, but we could get. You know, and that we haven't tapped into as a city of Twin Falls. And, you know, it's seeing what's here, the resources here, the resources we already have, that we can get people working.
Yeah. So people that don't know what's, uh, what the Southern Idaho Economic Development is, is basically kind of like, they bring like Chobani basically, and Cliff Bar. And that basically makes it so like, uh, uh, they get like, uh, everybody gets a job, you know, and, you know, healthcare and things like that.
Yeah.
But, uh, do you think the city has, you know, room and growth where it can, uh, take on more companies like, uh, Cliff Bar, Chobani and things like that?
I think that, no. I didn't.
The answer is no.
Right now, um, I would say with our resources available, I would say that, um, adding a larger business like those you mentioned.
Yeah.
Would probably be a no. Um, if we just look at the water supply.
Yeah.
We don't have enough for.
We need more water.
We don't have enough. Um, if you look at our reservoirs and our dams, you can see that without a, uh, large snow cap, you know?
Yeah, we need snow is what we really need.
Then we're not going to be able to really, um, continue on because we are ag based city, you know, we're an ag based economy. And so, um, no, the answer is, from what I know, I would say no.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, we do, I think everybody does want a higher paying jobs.
Mm hmm.
And they want affordable housing. And they want affordable housing. Is there anything city council can go ahead and do to uh help that? Like zone more stuff, approve a zoning for building and things like that?
Uh, well, ultimately, that is gonna be state. I mean, there's right now a um legislation, a house bill. That talks about um housing exemptions so that people can afford to live here. And I would agree that it's almost unsustainable to live in Twin Falls because the housing market's going up, but the. Is not. And so, yeah, I honestly, I don't see what would fall under city councils per view. On how that is affected or what they can do.
More lots to be built on houses, encourage builders to come and build uh. Uh, more houses here that are affordable itself. Make it so that there is options, look into some stuff that, you know, like, oh, this section, we're just gonna build houses that fit in this particular. Uh, range or so forth, that fits what the average income of Twin Falls is or something like that. I'm pretty sure there's a way to pass city ordinance or something like that uh that can maybe potentially do that or so forth. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
You know, to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure either. So I just gotta throw it out there .
We don't know. There's a lot. The thing is like, uh, even city council stuff, it's like, there is so much unknown stuff. Like, the thing is like. Um, I know you look at the um, the budget, but let me ask you this one. Do you ever look at city ordinances?
I have been ready, reading a couple of them .
I've been reading city ordinances as well too. Go ahead.
Because they were like complicated for something as simple as signs, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's so many city ordinances. And there's a website. I like that there's a website for it. You just uh type in Twin Falls City Ordinance. And it'll show you every city ordinance that uh the Twin Falls has. And you can like dive into, it's like, oh, that's city ordinance, blah, blah, blah. There's some funny, crazy stuff in there. Would you be like opposed to or like, like, let's get rid of these that don't make any sense?
I'm always for convenience and people uh having a easier life. How about that? So ultimately, like, let's not make people's lives harder. Let's not make it complicated. It should be a simple process. It should be like, okay. Maybe I pay a five dollar or permit, ten dollar permit and call it a day like that. I don't think that I wanna, I know I wouldn't as a city council member. Make people's jobs or lives harder.
Yeah, 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 it's kinda, let's, let's try to make them. I was reading some of these city uh ordinances about like the parks. It's illegal to climb a tree.
Really? I haven't not read that.
Yeah, I know. You cannot climb any trees. There's one that literally says, you cannot feed alcohol to squirrels. Yeah, I was like, who put this in here? Uh, there's a lot of funny stuff in there, okay? Um, I think we need to get rid of these funny uh ordinances that make no sense. Like, who's out there trying to get a squirrel drunk? I don't know anybody that's been trying to get a squirrel drunk. I don't know.
And I'm sure I've climbed a tree.
Illegal.
Yeah, gotta watch out.
Yeah, watch out. Yeah, like uh, and uh, but the funny part is in those city ordinances, it's like, you can get an exception. To climb a tree, you know? So I was like, I was like, I want an exception of, and I can climb any tree that I want. And I was gonna make this funny video. Where I was like, I'm the only legal person that can climb a tree. Uh, hilarious. So yeah, I would, I would, I would vouch for that. Let me get rid of these ridiculous city ordinance. That, that don't make sense basically, to make people's lives easier and so forth. A lot of people feel like, you know, that's not a way of police. Pulling people over because it's a funny city ordinance that doesn't make any sense. And that gives them a reason to go ahead and pull them over or do whatever, you know what I mean? So that would be, I would say that's a concern, in my opinion itself. So yeah, definitely, you gotta, you gotta read all these city ordinances now. I feel like you got some.
Now I'm gonna have to, yeah.
Get on this website and read every one of the city ordinances. I would actually go as far as, if you live in Twin Falls, you get a uh list of city ordinances. And you get uh this budget is as well, you know? This is a gift for you. This is what we're doing, you know? So that way, at least you know the budget and the rules for the city itself. And then you're like, well, I didn't know that was a rule. Sir, you've got. We've made sure you got the rules and the budget itself, so uh.
There you go.
Yeah, everybody gets a PDF when you join in or something . No excuses. So let me ask you some of these other questions. I, we've been way off track here. I didn't ask any of these questions. Were you prepared for any of my questions? Like, what, seems like you wrote some stuff. I guess maybe like, uh, tell us what you wrote.
Well, uh, yeah, um, so I was just kinda seeing, I don't know what people will ask and I don't. I wanna make sure that I'm sort of prepared .
Yeah, what do you got in your notes? Let's uh, let's look at some of these things. Cause like, I was like, we're, we're off the rails here. We're not following any kinda like uh. This is just a normal conversation.
Yeah, yeah. So this is um, like, if someone were to ask me about property tax, I would explain. Cause people do ask that and they don't .
Property tasks?
But they don't realize that city doesn't necessarily um make taxes when it comes to property, as in we don't uh. Set those that the state and county does.
State and county set city, uh, so yeah, well, you know, in the, in the budget here. You know, I was looking at it. It's like property taxes. We collect it and it basically says, um, looks like um, we. Property taxes, I believe we're getting twenty one million dollars from property taxes. And that seems to be increasing, well, increased a million from nineteen, nineteen million to twenty one essentially, so. So yeah, so that's because the houses are going up. And what about these property taxes? Y- y- you're saying that city council does not regulate property taxes?
Yeah, uh, and that kinda confuses people a lot. Um, we're the one who, yeah, we do receive the taxes. And from what I understand, we cannot receive more than three percent every year. So it might increase, so the, the state might say, okay, we're gonna increase property taxes, but as a whole, we can't accept more than three percent. And that's about six billion, not billion, million dollars, sorry. That's a big B .
Yeah, like, we, we've upped the budget from seventy seven to billion, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and so that's just interesting to know that though, the state might um increase property taxes significantly. We're not collecting that.
So you're saying that the senators uh are basically determining uh the overall uh number for the sa- sales tax. So people that are complaining like. They're, they're increasing their sales, the property taxes. It's not local, it's uh statewide. Basically, cool, okay, well, I didn't know that. Um, I mean, I'd never knew how they even do that. I know that if you basically default on your, uh, if you don't pay your uh. Taxes, obviously even property taxes, like three ye- uh, if you don't pay your taxes for three years, they'll sell off your property. Yep, uh, they have like, uh, they'll just sell it off. Bye bye.
Is it until they uh meet that, that deficiency?
Three years, if you don't pay your sales taxes, uh, they have like a thingy here at city in front of the uh. The building, the, the city hall building. They'll be like, okay, who wants this lot? I don't think anybody even knows this. And uh, that's how that, that's the way I understand that works. So I was like, interesting. So there are lots that go up for sale, you know, because uh, people get deficient on their sales taxes.
Oh, I was unaware.
Yeah, and you can do like a public request, see which ones are up for sale and stuff like that too, so, hmm, you know? So basically, that's all I really know about that. But uh, what else do you got in there, I guess?
Uh, yeah, so I've talked about property taxes and then I also have some impact fees, so. Impact fees is a pretty big issue, at least in my eyes. Uh, we've recently increased impact fees in Twin Falls.
Like, like, wha- what, what, what do you mean? Nobody likes increased fees?
Yeah, so impact fees are going to be fees that people have to pay, um, that are coming here, like businesses. And so these businesses pay these fees and the fees will go to different uh agencies in Twin Falls. That are going to be essentially impacted by the new growth.
But doesn't that kinda defeat the purpose of bringing in businesses? Because it's like, jeez, now I gotta pay these damn fees, you know?
It can be hard, cause then, well, if you have too high fees, then businesses are like, well, we'll go somewhere else, you know? So there is that balance. Um, but from the previous city councils, we've been behind on increasing the impact fees. So there has been a significant jump from then to now because we haven't been staying with it. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, so basically, they're fa- falling behind on what the normal fee is. So we have like lower fees basically. And what kind of fees are they collecting, I guess?
Yeah, so the fees is just gonna be I, from businesses, but they are gonna go towards things like uh the fire station, they'll go things like.
No, that makes sense. I mean, we, we, we want, you know, if your house is on fire, you want the fire department to come out and uh, you know, I think uh, again, you know. It's all in the budget, people. The fire department, uh, you know, the fire department gets five million? Is what it looks like, five point eight million. That's about right, I would say.
And the impact fees help pay for new things. Recently, I was down at the fire station talking to the fire chief. And they uh have gotten a new truck and and the impact fees pays for it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's good. Well, there you go. We need, we need it, we need a truck, we need a good truck that, you know, like can uh stop a fire, you know? I saw once, I was going to the dog park and this house got on fire and the fire department, boom, you know? They have, they, they keep track of like how fast their responses and things like that. They keep everything logged, which is crazy, you know, so. I guess for stats or something like that, I don't know.
Uh, and then water is an issue in Twin Falls. Because we are in a drought .
Yeah, everywhere that I go to, it's like, holy shh, there's no water here, you know, like uh, uh, even, we have like this. Shoshone Falls After Dark uh event and uh, we're like literally waiting for water to be released. So that go, it goes over the falls. And we're like, we need this water to go, you know? So I don't know how twenty twenty two is gonna be, but uh, let's all like hope that uh we get like hit with like. The biggest. How much snow do you think we need? Like, we need, were you here when like we had that crazy snowstorm?
Yeah, years ago. I wasn't here to experience it myself, but I'm glad I wasn't. I can't imagine.
Yeah, it was, it was so crazy, like uh, multiple feet uh of snow. We need that again. We should do some kinda like, you know, dance or something, or you know, get, get, uh, get the snow here. So uh, to, where does the city get its water basically? Do you know that?
Well, I can tell you that our water fund receives thirteen million dollars and uh ten million dollars is water waste. Uh, we get our water from the surrounding area and recently .
And stuff like that. I know some water comes from Blue Lakes Country Club. There's like a, like a little lake over there and they have water pumping out. But there's also like pumps all around, uh, that's, it's basically going down into the aquifer and pulling that out. But I'm not sure, are we drinking Snake River water? Like, are we processing that? I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're drinking uh that water, but I do know that uh we recently had to reduce our water consumption. And that was pretty significant for bigger businesses.
What, what would you, like, I know there's, there's some kinda, like, uh, if you, if you have your sprinklers going on or something like that, they're like, hey, you know, you've turned your sprinklers. It's like, do they have somebody like uh driving around and like, this person has their sprinklers on .
They actually do, yeah, so.
Somebody's job is, I drive around and uh look, see if anybody has their sprinkler on. But it's an accident, you know, like, what do you want me to do, you know? Them stupid machine, you know, turns on accidentally, you know, and then we're like. Turn this, you get a fee, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so based on your assigned days and that is going to be if you're even or odd numbers on your house. So that's something to consider.
Yeah, definitely, people need to watch out for that stuff. Do you think those fees are necessary? Cause like, we've got seventy seven million dollars. Do you think those, it's kinda like this? There used to be parking meters here, right? And they got rid of them. And the reason they got rid of them, because they wanted people to come here. I mean, couldn't we just be like, hey, we, we've got seventy seven million dollars? That little fund of the sprinkler guy going around, like, like, let's, let's, let's get rid of that, like, I'll be like, let's leave it known and be like, hey. We'll give you like one or two chances on this, you know, but you know, if you keep fucking up like this, then you know. You know, we're definitely gonna find you then or something like that. There's so many crazy stuff. I think Leah was also saying like, there's like a, your grass can't be a certain uh. Height or something like that.
And the city Twin Falls?
Yeah, if your weeds are too high.
Oh, weeds, okay.
Weeds, uh, if your weeds are too high, um, you get a fine for that. But the crazy part where she was saying was um, like. Boarded, boarded buildings, right? There's a double standard almost there, like, we care about the grass height, but we don't care if we, somebody boards up like a building or so forth and sits on it. You know what I mean? I, I feel like that needs to be like equaled out essentially, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't argue a different, a differ.
Yeah, yeah, you're like, let's, yeah, let's make it all equal essentially, yeah.
I'm always for making sure that everyone answers to the same standard. Um, I'm also for making sure that. If it's someone's private property, that I do.
Then you're like, yeah, cause that's the problem. It's like, the thing is like, uh, city council doesn't have uh jurisdiction over prior property. So you can do whatever you want, but uh, explain this to me. How do they have jurisdiction on uh my grass? You know, it's like, uh, how, how does that work?
I haven't, I haven't seen that city ordinance, so.
There, yeah, I'm pretty sure you'll probably get somebody like, yeah, uh, my, my weeds got too out of control and then uh, I think it's a. Code of code enforcement. So there's gotta be, uh, see, this is why you gotta read the codes.
I, I think that might be uh, depending on where you live, like, as in like a neighborhood .
I think it's probably a city ordinance that says you cannot do this. And then basically, uh, the guy's driving around and says like, hey. You, you're breaking this ordinance essentially. That's probably what's probably happening.
Have you ever got, have you ever got uh code enforcement?
Uh, no, uh, just sprinklers, I would say, you know, the machine uh. Sets something off and nobody's paying attention to that. So then you'll get like a warning or a fine typically. But I think there is a warning. I don't know what I'm saying. You don't get a, you, you get a warning versus, it's not a, you, it's not an immediate, uh, you know, uh. Bill or so forth, you know, so, I don't know why I even said that. I don't know. But again, city ordinances, it's like, how, how do they know? There's some guys driving around, you know? Uh, what else do you have?
Uh, well, what else? I have um, some information about myself, just saying that I uh. I'm concerned with our liver shortage, but we hit on that.
Liver shortage? Liver shortage. I was like, what are you doing?
Yeah, no, labor.
Labor shortage, yeah, well, you know, I, you know, I, I, I go to some of these places to get like, you know, uh. Fast food or something like that. And I, I, I'm beginning to feel bad for these people because it's like one guy. Running like ten machines. I was at a Pizza Hut or something and there was one guy, his point of sale machine was down. And he's like running five different things. And I was like, can they not find anybody to get, you know, make pizzas or something like that? Apparently not. So, but again, I think we talked about this, like, there's not much uh, city council can go ahead and do about that.
Yeah, it's gonna be harder for city council, but it doesn't mean that we can't have that, a focus or see that.
Why do you think people are like, I'm not doing this job anymore?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is, one, you know, they don't have to since moving here. Two, people that move in here are gonna be older. Maybe retirement age, and so that's why they don't have to work. They might, before the pandemic, these jobs were full, you know, we, they were filled. And so after the pandemic, you know, there has to have something happen. In that time span. And also, I would say the baby boomer generation is really starting to retire.
Yeah, they're like.
Okay, I'm out of it, you know, and I think those are a few reasons in which we have that, that issue here in Twin.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, like, these jobs definitely need to be filled, otherwise people's resources to things, things that you were like, yeah. Could go get a pizza, you know, you got it made. Now it's like one guy trying to do like fifty pizzas, you know, it's like. I guess, maybe like, is, the only thing that I can see city council doing is putting in more money into economic development. To try to bring uh, like, higher wage jobs uh in Twin Falls itself. I don't know exactly what the budget is for economic development. I don't know if you've ever looked into that one. Um, I think Twin Falls has like economic development budget itself, right? And again, that's, they, they try to bring people here or businesses. Would you try to bump that up?
Um, well, we, to bring more businesses when we can't find people in businesses .
Come down here, we have no people to work, you know? It's not a good idea.
I wouldn't necessarily say I would bump that up or focus on bringing more businesses. I would focus on. I wouldn't necessarily say I would bump that up or focus on bringing more businesses. I would focus on bringing more people in.
But but the thing is, like, when you bring more people in, they increase the prices of the houses and then, uh. And then I'm not even sure if they even wanna work these jobs here, cause they can just do them remotely now, so they can just get an Amazon job and they just be, you know, like. Uh, working from home for Amazon, you know?
Yeah, I would say, well, I mean, we, bringing people is the only thing that I see that we can do. And people that are willing to work here is what is going to help with that labor shortage. I would also see what we can do with having people that are already here. Get back into those jobs. So maybe marketing, uh, programs or services that give them ability to. Have, um, on the job training or mock interview, you know, how to make sure that resume is looking up to date. Uh, so that people have the. The tools to to start working.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, kind of give them like, maybe, maybe you're saying like, try to put people in a really good. Position, so that way they can get more money.
Yeah.
There you go. I like, I like that. Um, so maybe you can kind of answer this, cause again, I don't go to these city council meetings hardly ever, you know? I'll show up once in a while, but it'll be on a blue moon, you know? Um, who's introducing these ideas? Is city council introducing, uh, like, are they talking amongst each other? Like, how does, how does, how does things, uh? Like, what you've seen, how does it work for somebody that doesn't fully? I was gonna have Christopher Reed come on. And kind of go more in detail on how how city council even runs itself, I said.
Yeah, so there is agenda that you can grab when you walk in and it'll tell you what's gonna be happening for that night and, uh, it really goes through on, um. Passing, what, not so much city ordinance, but it's telling if permits, so they'll start off with permits if they get it or not, and usually it's a yes. Um, and then it'll go in, um, into whatever event they have, um, on the agenda for that night.
Yeah.
I'm sure that behind the scenes, the city council members are discussing and, you know, deliberating.
Really no understand how, who's who's writing these agendas. I know that, uh. I know that there's different committees, so like Parks and Rec Committee will have a talk between them and they'll say, we need to push this to city council. And then they push it to city council and then city council is like. We approve this.
Yeah, you you do have to get onto the agenda, um, but there is also that that spot. In the meeting where someone can come and speak.
Yeah, they they have like a five minute, like, uh, I have an opinion.
Yeah.
How how much do you think city council takes their opinion?
Yeah, I would say that they do take it, but two, people don't often give their opinion.
Mm hmm. They're just gonna sit there and they don't, do you go out there and like, listen, this is total BS, you know?
If I had a question or comment, I would definitely ask it. Um, usually I understand fairly well, so I don't have to. Ask, but sometimes it's a little intimidating getting up there. I'm like, I don't understand this budget question, sorry, uh, repeat.
Please, uh, explain line item two, six, five, B. Uh, what what is this exactly?
Yeah.
But then at that point, you're almost kind of like, you need to be on city council so that way you can go ahead and, cause, cause basically the way it works is, this is another little, uh. My understanding is like city council, you know, is talking to the city manager.
Correct.
And city manager, basically, there's like, the way I kind of understood it was city manager and the city attorney are their two primary employees. And then everybody else is kind of like a down the tree itself. There's like a little diagram that kind of shows that itself.
Yeah.
And, uh. I I would say maybe how about this? What do you think about the city manager itself? Then do you think he's doing a good job bringing everything that city council needs to see and do, um? I know he has a department as well.
Yeah, so that's Travis Rottweiler. Uh, he is going to be the city manager. Uh, and he's the one who's answering a lot of the questions when people have it, uh, when it regards to the budget itself and.
Yeah. What is, uh, city manager one point two million? What is, what does that go to? That's what I wanna know.
Yeah, well, there is a going to be a team under him, so it's not just him himself and that go all. From what I understand, it'll go one to paycheck, like what he makes and what they make, but also, um, what it takes to run that committee.
Mm hmm, yeah, takes takes a while. This is why I wanted, this is why I wanted to go ahead and get a breakdown of every one of these, like department budgets itself. That way. I did that once with, uh, Parks and Rec. And I got to see exactly where, uh, their whole physical budget year went to. I I found that very interesting. It's like, ooh, ah, ee, you know, it's like. It's much more detailed than this. The the city budget itself, itself is kind of like. Almost kind of like a giant long summary, but then when you really dig down into it, there's another layer to it and, uh. It's not really easily accessible, I would say. It needs to be more accessible for people itself. People that wanna really look into it and see exactly where, you know, like every penny is, cause I was even, I was like, I was like, my God, look how much a tree costs or like a removal of a tree or. Or fixing up a bathroom or so forth. I mean, um, I feel like what ends up happening is. People take advantage of the city. By pricing. There's regular pricing and then there's like, oh, this is what I'm gonna charge the city. So something that would cost, uh. I don't know, like, not that much money gets tripled by the city itself. What do you, what do you, what do you think about that and what do you, you know, like? Was there anything that, you know, people like city council can do about that? Get more bids, advertise it?
I would say that we do well with, uh, getting bids, uh, out there and receiving it. I mean, we do look on, I remember just a few weeks ago. Uh, the mayor was talking about a couple bids for a new sidewalk. And she was saying, hey, why is this one so expensive and why is this one not? And they were talking about, since they're already there. The bid itself would be less, and so we are considering it. They are considering it and they're looking at, uh, who's gonna provide the most cost effective product.
So you, so what you've seen is they don't buy the, they don't pick the most highest, they don't pick the cheapest, they typically pick the middle end itself. Um, how, uh, like, where are these jobs advertised for these bidders? Is it on a website or something like that?
They do have, um, on the website where jobs can be found in Twin Falls and so there's.
Like for city bids, I mean, I'm talking about city bids.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't know how that works.
That would probably more like planning and zoning, right? Um, I don't, I, that wouldn't be necessarily something I think. That city council does themselves. They might approve of it, the budget, you know?
Yeah, they'll just look at like, these are our options, we get to pick one.
Correct.
And then that's it. But what I'm saying is like, these proposals are three or four times as what, um, somebody would get. And I guess that's because of like, people know that the city has money and they just charge them up the wahoo zoo for everything. Everything that I was looking at the budget wise itself was double the price or triple the price.
Oh.
So that was kind of like, I was like, I have a problem with this. So that's why I didn't, I didn't like, I didn't like that, I guess, I don't know. So it didn't make any sense. Like, I was like, looking at. Ah, jeez, I was looking at some some things that they, uh, cause again, city council had these options and they picked one and, uh. Obviously went with the middle one, but even the middle one was like outrageous, uh, numbers itself, so I don't know. It seems like the city could go ahead and save some money and utilize it, I don't know, on other different areas of the city itself, making it look better and so forth. Every time I look at the road, uh, you know, we have like a road, uh, fund itself, right?
Mm hmm. There's money gonna be put towards infrastructure.
Infrastructure and so forth, right? Um, you know. Let's let's make the lines much more clear. I don't know if you've ever driven here when it's like raining, you know, and it's like, you can't see the lines sometimes. How hard is it to go ahead and clean up, you know, like repaint the lines? So that way, you know, they look more, you know, that way visible at night and so forth. It would just make the city look better in in general, I feel like.
It is, it is hard. Seventy million might sound a lot. You were saying seventy seven million. But when you realize how much.
How much of that is just gone here, gone there, and then it's like, we don't have that much money.
Yeah, it's really like, oh my goodness, well, this is how, yeah, sidewalk costs. That's hard, you know, if we're spending millions of dollars here and then, like you said, I think it was, uh, five point six million dollars in just our fire station and there's, you know. There's so many needs and so it's hard to.
Yeah, it's like you're taking, you're taking this bundle of money and then distributing it and next thing you know, it's just gone itself. Well, um, I guess, you know. It is what it is. There is not much, uh, you guys will be presented with like offers and then you have to basically pick. And I guess, when you're deciding on something, do you have anything that kind of goes through your mind where they, uh, like, how, what makes you think like, this is a good project or so forth? What? What are, what are you using to validate, uh, something is a good idea, I guess?
Yeah, I would say I would look at the need and I would look at the, uh, the cost benefit analysis, so. Well, how bad do we need it and what is it gonna cost us? How is it going to improve or enhance the life of people here in Twin Falls?
Yeah.
Those are the things I would be asking myself and ultimately, can we afford it?
Yeah.
Because we gotta make sure that we are, uh, physically, physi- fiscally conservative with our money. Um, we can't like, you know, be spending it on, uh, everything we'd like to, and so making sure that. You know, it's gonna be quality and not cost the taxpayers a lot of money.
Yeah, nobody really wants to be like, oh, more, uh, nobody wants to see like things going through the roof itself. Um, do you have a cat or a dog or anything on that?
I do have a dog.
Oh, okay.
His name is, uh, Trojan.
Trojan, okay.
As the USC.
Okay.
Trojans, the college football team, uh, so, there you go.
That's awesome. Uh, what do you think about, do you ever take your dog to the dog park?
No, I know, terrible.
I have a, I have like a vendetta.
Crazy, that's why.
Yeah, you're like, no. Um, so I take my dog to the dog park all the time and I want the dog park be fixed, like, um, it needs like a shelter. It needs to just be, like, I go to these other cities, I'm like, my God, this is a goddamn good dog park, you know? And then I come to ours and it's just like a giant field, it's nothing, you know, it's like, there's no, uh. Like for the, for a really long time, it was like neglected almost, like, like one whole area was just like, uh. Um, you know, just like abandoned and like almost started turning into a dispot, uh, like a, kind of like a dust storm or whatever, you know, but. They closed it down and it's been closed the whole summer. They cut off half of it. But when you see like things that are kind of like. Going bad, what would you, you know, like, what would you say for like city council? Like, what can they do? Like, uh. Cause obviously city council can talk to the manager, city manager, the city manager can then talk to the department itself. If you saw something in the community itself and you're like, this needs some kind of work, what would you, what would your steps be, I guess?
Yeah, uh, I would bring it up to the rest of the city council. I would just start there and talk to my peers and.
Yeah.
Uh, others who are sitting on the board say, hey, one, there's a problem and two, like, what, as a team, can we come together and think about solutions to the problem?
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, impact fees, something that city council does control, doesn't actually go to maintenance. It has to go to growth. I don't know if that makes sense. So we can't repair something, but we could like.
Grow, yeah, we will put a new building here, yeah. That's what I've been saying. It's like, we need a like a shelter there for like, cause it gets so cold. In winter, you're like freezing your butt off over there. I have, I have a, I have a husky and she always needs like a lot of exercise, so I take her over there to just wrestle other dogs and so forth. But it ends up kind of looking like a bunch of like homeless people around a barrel, you know? We're all like, oh my God, it's so cold, you know, so I've been kind of like advocating for that. It's like, we need to fix the dog park. We need to make the dog park the best dog park you've ever seen, you know? Um, and if you get elected, listen, look at the dog.
Okay, I'm going to the dog park.
You're going to the dog park and go, uh, check it out and so forth. Um, have you, uh, here's another problem that I kind of been seeing, uh, during the pandemic, a lot of teenagers almost like they're graffitiing. Um, have you seen any graffiti?
Yeah, uh, I have seen graffiti and now I believe it is a felony to be graffitiing.
Oh, hell yes.
It is a felony.
It's a felony, huh?
I heard that. I wanna say.
Are you sure? Because like, I looked at.
It is.
And see, I think that's incorrect because city ordinances, I can, city ordinance, you gotta, I'm telling you, city ordinances says if you get caught, uh, in Twin Falls with, uh. Um, being, uh, being, um, spray painting or so forth, it's like a hundred dollar fee.
Mm hmm, I think, I think.
I'm telling you, you want me to find the city ordinance itself.
I think it might now be, someone was telling me it's a felony.
It's a felony. Listen up, uh, you little hooligans, you know?
Cause like you said, it has been a problem during this time.
Pandemic because they're bored and they don't know what to do and so forth, so they're like, uh, if if there is no kind of fee, would you be like, yeah, uh. Open to like, let's bump it up through the roof, so that way people will learn their lesson if they get caught with a giant fee itself? Or or what would you do, I guess?
Uh, so if I saw someone.
Graffiti.
Graffiti, you know, um, one, as a city council member. I I mean, I would call the police, cause I can't do much, but yeah, no, I would not have a problem with, um, having a significant fee because. That really takes away from the beautification of Twin Falls, you know? I've seen it down on our rocks and our canyons and that, it's like, that's, uh, eyesore.
Yeah, it's an eyesore. And what do you, what do you say about like it being there for so long time? Like, I can go into Rock Creek and be like, well, this graffiti's been here for like months. Doesn't it make sense to go immediately clean it up? So that way you're, you know, cause like I was talking to Spencer, he's like, immediately clean it up, you know, it's like, doesn't it make sense? We should be doing these things automatically.
Yeah, um, absolutely. We wanna make sure that we, uh, have our. Clean, beautiful city the way it is and that graffiti isn't gonna help anything or add to that pill.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, that's, I guess, it's another thing, I guess, maybe if you get in city council.
Yeah, I mean, things you can do, yeah.
The things they can do. Is there anything that you really wanna get done if you got elected in city council? Like, I wanna, you know, this is kind of like what I really wanna do. And hope I have I have an impact on this.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I would say that, uh, just making sure maintenance is kept up. I know there's a a high demand on Idaho power. High demand on our roads, our gas line, power lines, sewer lines, so making sure that they get the support that they need or. To get the support to continue what they're doing is what I would, uh, spend a lot of my focus on.
So so basically, you want all the maintenance to be done? Yeah, every park.
And that's not.
Mode, all the graffiti gone, uh, roads, nice and clean, brand new lines.
I would like that, that to make sure, yeah, those demands are being met because I feel like, though it's not necessarily great, you know, um. What am I trying to say? It's necessary, it's needed, and that's, that's what the foundation is gonna start with maintenance and just.
Yeah, maintenance for sure. Um. Cool. Well, I mean, like, I I guess, you know, let me see if I got anything else here. I had one, you know, it's like, if you had like a, you know. Up ten million dollar grant budget and you can dump it in anything you want, would there be anything you want to like? Invest in like downtown, what what exactly, you know, kind of improvements, uh, would you be like, you know, here's ten million dollars?
Ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars.
Uh, I know that the, uh, fire station needs a new station, so we have a main one, um.
It's a little one.
Yes, and I have been down there and I've seen the need, uh, for. That maintenance and just keeping up with the the demand there.
Filer, Filer has a nice one. I don't know if you've been to Filer.
I haven't.
Uh, they got a really nice one, new one, and I don't know, I did a video about that. And it was kind of like local businesses also helping to make that possible and they have like a really nice big one now, uh, cause like. They showed me like, uh, how their Filer one, uh, looked like. It is so small, the current one, uh, that they were using. I was like, how do they even back out of here? You know, I was talking to this, uh, person named Sam and. Like this giant truck is like trying to come out and it's like, and then it was, it was like cramped, but now they got like a really nice one. I don't know if it's in operation yet. So you're thinking maybe like, we need like a bigger, uh, fire station itself?
Mm hmm, or just a new one.
Or a new one, it's, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I think there's just one, we just have one, right?
Uh, we we do have a few. We have, um, so we have the main station, station one, station two, station three, then, um, four is going to be. Uh, coming along the lines and then five is projected in.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we do have, uh, they strategically have to kind of put it in different areas, so whoever's closest, they kind of take off from there itself. Um, what about, uh, transportation itself? Like, uh, I know that's, Blue Lakes is packed and, uh. Washington is also now packed because of the more people itself, like, you know, you're saying like, let's bring more people, but like, that's just gonna really mess up. Blue Lakes and Washington itself.
I think that the city would definitely have to then consider a larger metro system. So that's gonna be in the the near future for sure.
Um, like a bus or buses?
More buses. More buses.
You think, uh, yeah, so once we hit that threshold, then we're gonna be accessing some kind of funds for.
We have hit the threshold. It's about fifty, fifty thousand for a metropolitan city and we've.
I thought we didn't hit the metropolitan, uh, so that's why we're not doing it.
No.
Right now.
We're fifty thousand is metropolitan city.
Okay. I, I, uh, so, so you think that's gonna be in the works slowly?
Yeah.
Cause, cause it's, you know, it's gonna take a while to put a bus system here. I know Sun Valley has it for their, you know, they're just, I don't know. It goes maybe to the ski resort or something, but uh, it's a bus, you know? If they can do it, we can do it.
Yeah.
Um, I think we've talked about a lot of stuff here. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to ask you. I guess the final thing would be, just kind of like a one more time recap of uh, what makes you stand out from other candidates?
Yeah, I would say, one, my heart for my community, and two, my heart for legislation. I really am uh, involved here. I really love the people here and I want a better life for the people here. I have uh, committed myself to reading the budget and reading city.
Sydney ordinances now, you know, you got homework to do, you know, like, I gotta read these uh, crazy, you know, squirrel ordinances.
To know about, uh, and I'm willing to do the research. I have done the research, cause I've been in state legislative internship positions where that was required. And I have the knowledge to really help see Twin Falls succeed.
Cool. Well, I mean, uh, like I said, I mean, this is, this is great. I think you've given me great answers here. Uh, this has been like a really good conversation, I feel like. I got a lot.
Good.
So, that's awesome. Well, thanks for coming on.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Hope, uh, wait, when is your thing, is that thing tonight?
Yep, six thirty, so I'm gonna have to head that way.
Go, yeah, I've, I've held you here for like a, a solid hour.
You're alright.
Now you gotta rush off to the other thing. So when, where is that uh, other uh, event happening?
So this open forum is going to be at Eastside Baptist next week.
So at six o'clock right now?
Seven o'clock, we'll be at Eastside Baptist. And then six o'clock is CSI next Thursday.
So, and who's gonna be uh, there?
It will be seat five.
Seat five candidates?
Yeah, tonight is seat five, um, at uh, I, I think actually tonight as a seat five is at Eastside Baptist is me, so seat five. Seat one is CSI tonight, I think.
So they got them split up?
Yes.
What kind of madness is this?
On the same days, that's why it was like.
It's like, uh, like, no, we need to see everybody in the same uh, place. Uh, what are you guys doing?
Anyways, yeah.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's weird.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna have to make a decision. I can only, I can only be at a one.
But you can then switch, because I'm um, seat, seat five, seat one will be this week at Eastside Baptist. The next week, anyways.
Do you think there's a lot of people that will show up to this thing?
I hope so.
What do you think the crowd, like hundreds, fifty, ten? You know, what if there's like five people there?
Well, then I'll be hopefully getting five votes.
Five votes, it's all she needs, it's five votes.
Yes.
All right, well, I wish you luck here. This was uh, this was a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun talking to you, so.
Hannah Cameron, seat five.
Hannah Cameron, seat five people. Awesome. Well, again, it was very nice meeting you.
Thank you, thank you.
Perfect. There we go, I think I got it.
Alright.
Yeah, you're a really good candidate.
Thank you.